Good evening, I'd like to welcome everybody to the March 10th River Falls City Council Meeting. First thing we'll do is stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can we have a roll call please, Kristy?
Beerset?
Here.
Downey?
Here.
Gagne?
Here.
Morset?
Here.
Dean?
Here.
Page?
Here.
Watson?
Here.
Okay, then we'll have approval of the minutes from the February 25th meeting.
I move for your approval of the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we'll have approval of the bills with Mr. Watson.
I'm Mr. Mayor and council, I move for the approval of the bills in the amount of $1,347,318.9, subject to the comptroller.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we'll have public comments. If there's anybody in the audience has anything they'd like to stand up and talk about, now would be the time.
Mayor and council, my name's Melissa Mimi Abduch. I live at 859 Brentwood Circle here in River Falls and I own Mimi's Cookies and Creamery. I'm not sure if you'd like me to address the agenda item now or when the agenda item...
Now.
Now? Okay. So, in reviewing some of the documents that had been submitted to the council presented for this meeting, I just made some notes here and wanted to address them and hopefully that addresses any concerns the council might have. So, one of the items stated that the event is being marketed to 18-plus and we are asking for open container exemption. And so, I just, in general, comment that the demographics of this event have not changed in the nine years that it's been put on, so the demographics have not changed, the marketing principles have not changed, everything is done on Facebook and at the soup sites. Prior to this meeting, I did review the demographics of the responses on the Facebook event and a very minimal amount, less than 8% actually, of the responses are under the age of 25. It doesn't give a breakdown of 25, 24, and so on and so forth, but whereas 54% of the demographics is actually aged 25 to 44, so we can see that, you know, we're not, this event is not one that is being received by the younger individuals of the city. Bars will still have to ID and abide by all the same laws that they do on a daily basis for those that are being served. We have already purchased mugs that they'll have to use, just as in, again, the past nine years, and wristbands. These will be further monitored, not just as they go from bar to bar, but we have volunteers that will be roaming the event to ensure that these are, these laws are being upheld and that the event is run very smoothly and without incident. The documents also point out that the council has not approved an open container exemption for someone that is not a nonprofit, so you've approved exemptions for the chamber. I understand that they are considered a nonprofit, however, as Shooter and I are organizing, leading the organization of this event, we are not doing it for profit. In fact, both of us are contributing monies of our own to make sure the event happens. And we are also turning it into a fundraiser event where we're asking patrons to bring in non-perishable food items so that we can stock our brand-new food pantry, which is absolutely beautiful if you've not been there yet. And then just further state that, you know, we take this very seriously. The event itself and how we want it to run is no different than how it has been run in the past. It's been a very successful event. We want to address any concerns or questions that you may have that may have you on the ledge of, do you want to approve it or not, so that if you have a question that we can address, or if there's something that we can put in place that would address that concern, we would definitely want to hear that so that we can address that upfront. The town really enjoys this event. The downtown businesses really appreciate this event, as shown by the demographics of that 25 to 44, those are generally not the people out, going out for drink specials that the bars have. You know, these are families that come through and are patronizing locations other than the bars downtown. We have 20 locations this year, and we're really looking to have a great event, and hopefully we have the support of the council to allow that open container.
Thanks.
Daniel Softfield Shooters Pub, Inc. I just wanted to run it as it has been run for the last consecutive eight years, which the city council has approved. I'm losing money on it. I have contributed my own money into it, and I just wanted to do it so that it didn't lapse, so that we continue this. I've got a lot of patrons that come into my place of business and say that their families are doing it. Hence, that's why we moved it from Tuesday, March 17th, on St. Patrick's Day, to Sunday, March 15th, from noon to 5:00, to make it more of a family-friendly event. So, it's not too early, it's not too late, so if people have to work on Monday morning, it's done by 5:00 and you can still go home and have dinner and make it to work on time, whereas some of the people in St. Paul don't make it to work following the St. Patrick's Day activities. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks. Well, when we get to it, if they have questions, you can come back up then. Thanks, guys. Anybody else in the audience?
Mr. Mayor, I've got a public comment if I could.
Yep.
Last night at the Plan Commission meeting, I addressed the Plan Commission meeting regarding the waiver of subdivision approval jurisdiction in the town of Troy. Those of you who haven't maybe had a chance to read the agenda or the Plan Commission agenda, this is coming next meeting, and I unfortunately will not be able to attend, so I wanted to make those, make my comments now known to the rest of the council. One of the things that I'd ask the council to remember, what this is asking for is us to waive our jurisdiction in the ETZ, the 1 in 35 subdivision ordinance that we currently have in place with the surrounding towns. So, I would ask you to remember that you are, you represent the city of River Falls, not the town of Troy, and with that in mind, I'd ask you to question what advantage the city would have in waiving this jurisdictional boundary authority that we have. I don't think that if the answer that you come up with is goodwill between the city and the town of Troy, I respectfully disagree that this will go any farther to create goodwill with the city, with the town of Troy. This obviously is based on the actions of the town of Troy most recently, in the last previous year, couple of years. The report goes on to indicate that the geographic location of the parcels in question would arguably not be included in a boundary agreement with the town of Troy. The fact is today, those, that the boundary is set where it is, it is included in that, inside that area, and it was set for a reason. That boundary was set when I was on the Plan Commission years ago, prior to my time on the council. We literally took a van and drove around and established that boundary based on certain criteria at the time that we did. So, we did that with an eye towards establishing that boundary. Whether or not the boundary is in or not is really irrelevant because the town of Troy could resolve this by sitting down with us and having a boundary agreement discussion, much like Kenny has done with us, much like Clifton, we're gonna see tonight in the, on the agenda, has agreed to start the conversations, and much like the town of River Falls has already indicated to us, they want to sit down and talk as well. So, to waive our authority, and, you know, part of the reason we have this in place is to help motivate the town to come to the table and have these discussions, this waiver puts us farther from that goal, not closer to it. There's always the act of, there's always the potential of legal action. I would challenge us to say that acting under duress of legal action is a terrible way to govern. I'm not looking for a fight, I'm not looking for them to sue us, but I don't think that we should not do something or do something because of the threat of illegal action. Ultimately, the town residents of Troy need to stand up and let their elected officials know that this could all be resolved through a boundary discussion agreement. So, anyway, I thank you, the rest of my council members, for listening to me, and hopefully this will make more sense next week, next meeting when you get your packet or you go back and take a look at the Plan Commission last night. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks. Okay, Jason?
Thank you. Mayor and council, I was gonna take this opportunity under the public comment period to speak with you for a few moments about the Novell Coronavirus COVID-19. As you know, there's been a confirmed case in Pierce County. We've been in communication with public health representatives about this. This person was exposed while traveling and is cooperating with public health. They and their family are isolated at home at this time. Public health officials have indicated there are no other confirmed cases in Pierce County. There is increased surveillance throughout the medical community, and any person that's concerned about illness or exposure should contact their medical provider. Vulnerable populations remain the most at risk. These include older populations and those with underlying heart, lung, kidney disease, diabetes, and other conditions that suppress the immune system. City staff are keeping informed and collaborating with our public health colleagues in Pierce and St. Croix counties. It's important to note that the Wisconsin Department of Health Services is the lead agency for responding to COVID-19 for us locally. That is accomplished through our county health departments. I also wanted to share with you what city staff are doing at this point regarding this matter. We remain a conduit of information for the community. This includes information from the CDC, Centers for Disease Control, Wisconsin Department of Health Services, and our county health officials. We will make social media posts, website updates, and announcements when appropriate, always being mindful of the county's lead in this matter and ensuring that our efforts are supportive of theirs. We have asked department heads to make plans for the potential that members of the workforce may need to work from home for long periods of time or may not be available if they are ill or taking care of loved ones. Staff are currently identifying and triaging work tasks and projects with this in mind and evaluating any potential barriers to remote workflows. We've placed additional hand sanitizer dispensers throughout facilities and providing materials related to proper hand washing and respiratory etiquette. We're asking staff members to be extra diligent in cleaning work areas. We're working with our cleaning contractor to deploy enhanced disinfectant measures for the foreseeable future. We're sharing information and coordinating efforts with our colleagues at the school district, university, hospital, and housing authority. Staff are actively participating on related conference calls with public health officials and governmental agencies. The executive team has increased our meeting frequency, and staff will continue to monitor new developments and be prepared to implement further preparations and response components. We are also asking staff, visitors, officials, and board and committee members to stay home when they are sick. Those that are ill should refrain from attending meetings or coming to work until they are free of fever for at least 24 hours. Council members, staff, and the public are encouraged to remain informed with factual information. The city has provided information and links from the Wisconsin Department of Health Services and the Centers for Disease Control within the news and announcements section of our website at www.rfcity.org. Finally, while we will be concerned, attentive, and vigilant, we will also remain dedicated in our service and continue to attend to the needs of our community to the best of our abilities. I'm happy to answer any questions if I'm able to do so.
Anything for Jason? Thanks, Jason. Okay, anybody else in the audience have any comments? No? Okay, so, we will go on, we're gonna have a park and park board and summer recreation presentation. Our park coordinator, Cindy Dankier, here, and our, the Park and Rec Advisory Board Chairperson, Patricia LaRue, is here.
Thank you, Mayor and council, for allowing me to have my annual speech here in front of the city. My name is Cindy Dankier, Recreation Manager for the city. Some of the things that are coming up, obviously, our activity guide is coming up. It will be in the Star Observer Express in your mailbox this weekend, and also online, probably by the end of this week, so people can review things. And sign up starts on Monday morning, 8:00 a.m. We thank you for your support on the Glen Park Pavilion. It has been a wonderful addition to Glen Park. We've actually rented it out several times already, and we have it rented for 70 times already this next coming summer, and have doubled our revenue, you know, already this year on it. And the responses back on the Glen Park Pavilion have been, just, they just can't believe how nice it is. And so, I said to Hal before the meeting that I'm so glad the park board stood behind it and didn't want it to look necessarily like the one at Hoffman Park, and chose to make it look like this facility. One of the things I brought to you last year was we wanted to add additional tent camping out at Hoffman Park, and even though this is only one, we had many weekends where we had as many as seven tents out there, and it was very well-received. Some of the groups that I helped to facilitate school facilities, and one is the pickleball court, and together we went to the school and we had the school paint in for permanent pickleball lines in Greenwood Gym. And what they do a lot of times as these groups is they give back to, back to the community or schools. And this group gave back paddles and balls and allowed the fire department to use the nets, and so here's the upper elementary playing pickleball in their school curriculum. They also, together with the boys and girls' basketball, added AED outside of the new gym, so that's obviously to be used for health reasons for anybody. We had many changes over the summer because we didn't have Glen Park. We went into the high school for swimming lessons, and although we missed the 5-and-under group, our lessons were still, you know, very well-functioning. We had to go through some construction of the school zone to get in there, but it really seemed to work out. During the construction, we still did help some things at Glen Park, and here's the construction of putting the path in the front of the soccer fields. We still had baseball, ooh, well, did everybody catch that? We still had baseball that went on at the school facilities, and we had 420 from four-year-olds on up to eighth grade. We still had our fun camps. This one is Little Construction Camp that we held out at Hoffman Park, and because we couldn't use Glen Park, we used Hoffman Park. And people seemed to really actually enjoy Hoffman Park, and we were so used to using Glen, it was a change for us, too. And then one of the things we had to change was the T-ball, and we put the T-ball and the fun, fire truck fun day out at Hoffman Park, and it really, actually, I think the fire department wants to come back to Hoffman instead of going to Glen Park again this next coming year. One of our most popular ones and ones I think the kids get actually the most out of, and it's probably for the older ones, is the Science Explorer, and that's because we can go down and use our own Kenny water right below Glen Park. I'm turning it over right now to our Park and Rec Chairperson, Patricia LaRue, and this is our park board for this year, and she's gonna talk about some other things that I moved really fast by before, but...
Hi, I'm Patricia LaRue, and new to the park board, and Susan Reese is staying with us. So, we've got 22 parks with 462 acres. Our largest park is a 70-acre Whitetail Ridge park that they do the biking on. Our smallest is a quarter acre, Osnes Park, which is just over on Second Street. It just has a picnic table, but it's a park. Of course, you can't have softball without parks. The, our Summer Music and Veterans Park is where the east side of the city gets to meet the west side of the city, and if you watch, a lot of times little kids are out there dancing, and sometimes people just stop for a second to see what's going on. We have art on the Kenny, and believe me, there are pork shanks, and the Amish bread is art when you get to the last booths. We have the Healthy Kids Run, and we look at this and it's really fun to watch these guys, but these guys are serious. You'll watch them stretching, and they're huffing, and they really, really do a fabulous job. Yoga in the park, you know, kudos to anyone who can get up in the morning and go out and stretch. I don't. Kenny, off-road cyclists, these folks can bring in over 2,000 spectators and bikers in one weekend that use our restaurants, our gas stations, stay at our hotels. This is really, the off-road cyclists are really a good partner to have. We have sledding in Hoffman Larson and DeSantis Park. We also have snowshoeing up on the Whitetail Ridge. And this is a picture that speaks to me because you just feel so much better when you can bring your pet with you versus sending it off to the kennel while you take off. And this is one maybe Dr. Page understands. I don't know if the National Guard, this is the ROTC, they run up, they run all the way to Mound Park. Then, of course, gonna be the big addition is the new splash pad. Once those, the water's turned on, the kids are gonna love it. We have one of those buckets that fills, and you never know when it's gonna tip over on you. And then, of course, the pavilion is our gem right now, and like Cindy said, it's being used. We've been in there a couple of times. It's just, it's state-of-the-art gorgeous, and those are garage doors that will go up, and it's just open air. So, with that, any questions?
No pictures of the dog park. I thought that's where you were going with the dog.
No, no, the dog is enjoying himself in our campground, so, yes, we have 22 parks. We should highlight one every so often, so, any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I just have a comment. Family member had a kid's birthday party in the pavilion this last weekend. It was a great venue for just the whole family to get together. You have the bathrooms right there in-house, you have the refrigerator, the sink, I mean, it really kind of, it's a great setup for any family event that anybody wants to do. And I had some comments that people made that it was echoey in there. I didn't find that to be true at all. We had kids yelling and laughing, and it was, it was really well put together.
Well, and when we get the doors open, it won't, and then for the public to know is the bathrooms are open to the, if you rent it, it's your space, but yet the bathrooms are still available to the public, they have their own entry, so they're not disrupting your space, and yet your people have, you know, really nice bathrooms to go to as well.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody have any other questions? Thanks, guys. Okay, I think what I'll do, before I go into public hearing, I'm gonna have City Engineer Zach Reiner come up, and he's gonna give us a presentation on the stormwater permit, and then we'll go into a public hearing after that.
As Mayor said, my name's Zach Reiner, I'm a civil engineer with the city, and I'm gonna talk about the MS4 Stormwater Permit 2019 Annual Report. First, a quick overview of the history and what the report is. In 2006, the city first became regulated as an MS4, which is a municipal separate storm sewer system. In 2014, our permit was renewed, and a TMDL for phosphorus for Lake St. Croix was created at that time. And in 2019, last year, our permit was renewed again, and I'll come back to the TMDL with an update on that at the end. Our permit requires an annual report, which includes demonstration of compliance to the six minimum control measures. It requires us to maintain a storm sewer system map, which we do in-house with our GIS system, and a demonstration or report on our TMDL status, as I said, I'll touch on that at the end. So, the minimum control measures, the first one is public education and outreach. We achieve this one through a variety of different things. Engineering, along with public works and utility staff, go to all the second graders in the city for Public Works Awareness Week, talk about the various equipment and stuff, but we in engineering talk about salt use. The city is a member of Rain to Rivers of Western Wisconsin, which is a group of MS4 communities that pool together our resources to make, maximize our impact in this area by sponsoring booths and events, conferences. We maintain a website, have trainings, and create some publications such as door hangers and salt cups. The city and our, us in engineering have given some presentations to UWRF, different classes, part of Green Teams Group at the city, got a mural put in at the public library featuring a stormwater theme around a storm drain, and we have a Plinko Board that we bring out to events like the customer appreciation event. The second control measure that we have is our public involvement and participation. Again, a bunch of different things we do to complete this. Couple of them, we have an adopt upon program where volunteers can sign up to clean up the trash around a pond twice a year or more, and they report back to us about the trash pickup, but as well as any concerns that they see, such as erosion or large debris. We have 84 ponds that are avail, or that can be adopted. Forty-six are already adopted, so 38 are available. We also have a rain barrel program, which was a pretty big hit in the last couple of years, and we've actually sold out of the rain barrels we made and had some kind of difficulties getting some more made, but we have a plan and supplies to get them made here as soon as we can this year to get them available early this year. One of those barrels, we have given to the River Falls High School Art Club the past couple of years, and they've painted it up in various designs, they really have fun with it, and it turns out to be pretty cool. The barrel in the picture with the oranges was their most recent design, it's upstairs right now. Those barrels have been going to the Ford Foundation to be auctioned off to support that foundation. We also do a bunch of workdays with the schools, Montessori High School, and as Cindy mentioned, the Science Explorer Camp, we participated in that to help teach the kids about water quality and have a little fun down in the river. The other control measures, the third one is the illicit discharge detection and elimination. Part of that is us in going out inspecting our outfalls during dry weather to see if there's any flow. Generally, if there's flow during dry weather, that might be an illicit discharge. We didn't find any. We also investigate any reports or complaints on illicit discharges. Last year, we had two. Both of them were an advanced disposal garbage truck breakdown. One was confirmed, or not confirmed to be an illicit discharge, it was a hydraulic hose. It was contained before it reached the storm system, but one was a confirmed illicit discharge. It was a coolant hose blowing off, and the antifreeze rushed right into the storm sewer system, so the DNR was contacted. They came and investigated and determined that no further action was required because of this relatively small amount would be able to be diluted without any significant harm, and you can see in the picture the cleanup effort that they were able to do with the remaining coolant there on the left. The fourth measure is construction site pollution control, where we basically inspect all the active construction sites periodically throughout the year, looking for things like sediment tracking in the street, a rock entrance, sediment that's gotten past their perimeter control that they need to clean up, and making sure that their perimeter control is in place and intact. The fifth one is post-construction stormwater management. Basically, we permit any facilities that have stormwater treatment systems. We had seven permits last year for 1300 South Main, Wildcat Terrace, The Depot, the River Falls Baseball Stadium, Food Pantry, and Two Houses. And finally, the minimum control measure of pollution prevention. We do a few different things for this one. We inspected about, and repaired about 180 structures last year, and we inspected 35 of our outfalls and identified a few that needed some maintenance. Our plow trucks have all, at this point, I believe, been outfitted with some new GPS and monitoring software and equipment that allows us to see how much salt is being applied, where it's being applied, all that kind of stuff, so we can continue to fine-tune how much salt we're putting down. And we have went to several trainings, the Fort and Winter Maintenance Training, Freshwater Symposium, and a few internal staff training, so we're keeping our public works guys very well-trained, and they're very good at what they do. And finally, back to our TMDL for an update and timeline on it. And the permit required a report on the status of meeting the TMDL as part of the 2017 Annual Report. So, in March of 2018, we submitted our 2017 Annual Report with modeling that showed that we met the TMDL at that time. In September of 2019, we received a notice from the DNR... In September of 2019, we received a notice from the DNR, they had some comments and some modifications they wanted us to make to that modeling, and with those modifications, we no longer meet the TMDL. Just a note on the modifications, they were mainly in two areas of modifying our infiltration rates to use their conservative values without further data, and they did not want us to use some areas that they only wanted the DOT to be able to claim. So with those two changes, that dropped our removals a bit. Um, so, eh, the permit requires for the 2019 report that T, MS4s that don't meet the TMDL to specify the plan that they have a few different options of what the plan is to become in, to meet the TMDL, and the plan that we have chosen is essentially a staged plan, starting with a removal rate for 2024, which we already meet, so we already are in compliance through 2024. And just as a thing by the numbers for the update, we're required to rem, or the TMDL is to remove 46% of the phosphorus we generate, and after the modifications to our modeling, we're at about 38, so we're still close. That first stage is required to remove 560 pounds of phosphorus, and we already show removal of over 1,100 pounds of phosphorus, so that's how we are, uh, in compliance through 2024. And our next steps going forward to meet the TMDL is first to do some soil tests here, hopefully this summer. With our own tests, we can show that our infiltration rates are what they are, and those rates, we believe, will likely be higher than the conservative values that the DNR, uh, stipulates in their tables without further data. So we'll get that data to hopefully boost our numbers. And we also plan to reconstruct a pond behind St. Croix Street in 2021, adding a significant amount of stormwater treatment there. With those two, uh, updates to our model, we can then create a specific action plan to go forward to meet the TMDL if those two things don't already put us in compliance with the TMDL at that point. And with that, I thank you for your time, and turn it back to Mayor.
Thanks, Zach. Um, let me, let me open up public hearing first on, um, I'm gonna close council hearing and open a public hearing on stormwater permit. It's the 2019 Annual Report. And is there anybody in the audience has anything they'd like to say about this? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and open up the council hearing, and first I'll take a, um, motion on this.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, we approve the stormwater permit for 2019 Annual Report. Resolution authorizing the consent to the 2019 Annual Report to discharge water.
Second.
Okay, questions and comments for Zach?
I just wanna comment for, uh, the folks out there that TMDL stands for Total Maximum Daily Load of Phosphorus Going Into the St. Croix River.
Thank you, forgot to mention that one.
Okay, thanks, Zach. Appreciate it. Okay, so I got a first and a second? Yep, so I got a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, move on to the consent agenda. Uh, first one is a resolution establishing in-person absentee voting location for the April 7th Spring Election and Presidential Preference and November 3rd Grand Election, and this will be over at the UWRF. Next one is a resolution authorizing participation in a cooperative, cooperative boundary agreement between the city of River Falls and the town of Clifton. This would authorize us participating in that. Uh, next one is a resolution appointing city representatives for the Cooperative Boundary Committee with the town of Clifton. Does anybody wanna poll anything?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to poll number four.
Okay, I'll take a motion on the rest.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, we approve consent agenda items five and six.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Mr. Morissette, you polled four?
I polled four, for, for some discussion and, and, um, just to, just to talk a little bit more about it. I, I'm struggling with this, with this resolution, the in-person voting, um, that we're selecting the university to have this at. Um, I, I, I'm not, I, I, I'm all in favor of getting as many people to vote as possible, but with, with same-day registration and that already being a voting location, I'm a little, I, I don't know that I understand why that, that's a spot that we would pick. If we were gonna capture more people, my thought would be, well, let's go to Dick's or, or Family Fresh and set up there. I understand that there's limitations with ADA and some different things, but the point I'm trying to make is, is that I think there's a broader net that we can capture people, um, outside the university. I know the argument is people can go to the university and vote as well, but I just don't see a lot of people. I myself don't even drive down Cascade during the week because of the university traffic that's there. Um, I know that we do this for the seniors, um, we do this for a reason for the senior citizens in our community, because they're not always able-bodied, and they can't always get out, they can't always have easy access to transportation. I understand that. I, just as I was researching this and thinking about this topic, I Google mapped it from the, from the center of the university to, to City Hall, it's .7 miles. Um, I think, I think most college students are able-bodied enough to make that walk. Um, I have three college students living in my house, I have three college student children. They have a responsibility to partake in, make an effort in voting, and making it easier for them, just for that group alone, just doesn't seem right for me. So I, I guess I'm gonna be opposed to this, to this.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Um, I, I'm seconding essentially what, uh, Alderman Morissette is saying, but, but I'd also take it a little bit further. Um, you know, it was brought up that, um, we have children that are out there that live in our houses, that potentially go to college in a different community. I would ask those folks to vote in that community that they live, come from, they know the values, they know the culture, they know everything about that community, and that's where they were brought up. So when we open up an election, um, to a broader net, people might say, okay, I'm not gonna vote at home, I'm gonna vote here for a national election. That's great, I encourage that, and I want as many people to vote as possible, too. But we also have other things on those ballots that don't necessarily represent their values, like our city council, our state representatives. A lot of times, there's other referendum items that come on these ballots that wouldn't necessarily impact these folks long-term if they're not either living in our state and our community, and I think those should be more for the people that live in that community. That's where I'd leave it.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yep.
Um, I can't disagree more. Um, uh, people, people can vote where they live. Um, in some circumstances, um, students who are not, don't consider themselves permanent residents can vote in their home jurisdiction, that is up to the home jurisdiction. But, um, the students who live here, live here. They are citizens of River Falls and are entitled to vote, they don't have to earn it by having certain interests, they get to vote because they live here. And I am very much in favor of increasing, um, young people voting, of having it be even more easy for students at the university to vote. Um, participation of, um, that age in, um, uh, local elections, uh, well, in elections tends to be low, um, among university students, and anything we can do to increase that of, for students who live here, um, I'm in favor of. So I'm in favor of, of making it easier. It's also not just the students, it's the people who work at the university, staff and faculty who live in town, it's gonna be easier for them to vote as well. It's not just for the university students, but, um, for all the many people who, who live nearby or work there. So, and we'll vote in favor of this.
I think the college provides ample area for parking and accommodations for everybody in the city. It makes a lot of sense for it to be there, I'll be in favor of this.
Okay.
I, I, again, second, uh, what Diane said, I, I want as many people to vote as possible. I do think there, on, on the other side of that, ample opportunities for folks in their home communities to get absentee ballots and vote on the issues that matter to them most, um, not just national elections, but also their local. Um, and on Election Day, a majority of those students that live on campus vote right on campus, so they can, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, hop out of one of their classes during one of their breaks, just like the rest of us do, uh, if we choose to vote on Election Day. Um, otherwise, they can choose to vote absentee, walk into City Hall if they are a city resident, and they choose to be.
Anybody else?
I just, I just wanna, I just wanna reinforce a couple of points of my comments, make sure they're clear. My opposition to this is not to, to exclude college students, my opposition to this is to try to broaden, if we're gonna have, if we're gonna have voting, um, pre-voting, other than, uh, early voting other than City Hall, I'd like to find someplace that captures, for the most part, more than just college students. And I understand the point that, that Ms. Odine is making about, you know, there's, there's employees there and there's other people, but I just feel like, back to my example again of Dick's or Family Fresh, I think we would capture college students and the general public in different places, and I'm just not sure that having it at the university, um, it, it, having it at the university does appear to me to be, to be favoring one, one group of our population instead of making it easier for the, for the population as a whole. That's really my com, my base my comments on.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I, 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 I don't agree with that. I voted at, uh, uh, the university when that was my polling place and never had a problem parking or anything, so I think plenty of people can get to the university and I don't have a problem with it at all. I, I, I'd move, uh, to approve the resolution appointing, um, the in-person absentee voting location as specified in the consent agenda.
Second.
Question, any more questions or comments?
Yep.
How long does this apply? Is this just for one election?
I, that's a good question.
I mean, this isn't a forever thing, is it?
This is, we, I know I'd asked you about trying to get a contract or something, so come on up and tell us.
The resolution says it's just for...
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Amy White, city clerk. To answer your question, we are just addressing the elections so far in 2020, so it would be for the April and November elections that we would open up for early in-person voting at the university.
Amy, could I ask a quick question?
Certainly.
All right, Ms. Mayor. Do you happen to know, and I apologize, I don't mean to spring this on you, but do you happen to know how many in-person registrations happened at the last election at the university?
I can only comment to the gubernatorial, we had 861, uh, Election Day registrations at the university, and we had an additional 512, I believe it was, at the high school, because the university student population is split between the two polling locations.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Next, move on to ordinances and resolutions. Uh, first one's a resolution approving request from the city of River Falls, Area Chamber of Commerce and Tourism for city assistance with their 2020 events, and the chamber director, Russ Corpora, will give us a little presentation.
Good evening, I'll ask for some technical support in here to get there.
There you go. Want to use that or the spacebar?
All right, good evening, everybody. Nice to see you all again, I'm Russ Corpora, I'm the executive director of the River Falls Chamber of Commerce. I reside at 205 South Grant Street in Ellsworth, Wisconsin. Um, for those of you that were in attendance at the meeting in the fall when I introduced myself, you may remember that this is the fifth Chamber of Commerce, I've had the privilege to lead. Uh, my first job as a chamber director was in Cable in 1994, and, uh, home of the American Berkabiner and the Schwammgen Fat Tire Mountain Bike Festival. So it's where I became, uh, familiar with the economic power of special events. Uh, so not only do the events generate economic impact during the event weekend, uh, but we know that special events are often the first time that event attendees, uh, come to our community, which in turn, uh, becomes repeat visits on non-event weekends. So they, special events are very powerful. Um, since 1994, I have founded, led, rebooted dozens of events from marathons, 5Ks, inline skating events, mountain bike races, pub crawls, arts and crafts fairs, music fests, and, uh, summer community festivals. So somewhere along the last 25 years, I gained the reputation of being good at revitalizing, revitalizing events and, uh, have kind of become known for that in the chamber world. Uh, my most recent project was working with a great team in Ellsworth to rebuild Cheese Curd Fest over the last few years. So when my board hired me, uh, one of the first charges they gave me was to examine all of our special community events and think about ways to make them stronger. So, uh, 20, in 2020 and 2021, um, the community event season will reflect, uh, some of those changes and ideas. Uh, the bottom line is, some of our events here in River Falls, uh, have grown a little stale, um, and, uh, others have relied a little bit too much on outdated marketing tactics, um, and all of them did not have enough marketing dollars dedicated to their efforts. Uh, and so some of what you'll hear about today will be, uh, to help boost the marketing efforts. I wanna start in the way that Chris Blazier started last year by thanking, uh, the participation of the city in putting on these events, from, uh, electrical folks to Public Works, um, to police officers, fire, uh, firemen, um, and everybody in between, administrative staff here in City Hall. Uh, the chamber cannot put these events on without the tremendous support of the city, and for that, as an organization, uh, we thank you. Um, I did wanna let you know that this presentation last year went about 50 minutes, um, because apparently there was a little controversy over Carnival, um, and so maybe we won't be so long tonight. Um, I'm not gonna talk a lot about St. Patrick's Day, um, we decided to free up some time as part of our Strategic Planning Day, um, in December 16th, um, for a bunch of new projects that the chamber is gonna be rolling out, including, uh, the reboots of some of these events that we're talking about. I can tell you that I'm a real big believer in making sure that we create the biggest incremental gain, um, that we can on economic impact, and it is the reason St. Patrick's Day was selected as one for the chamber to, um, retire from, from administering that event. Um, I come from a town in New Richmond where I was a chamber director, uh, thousands and thousands of people, it's an Irish town. Um, the bars run that, that event, and almost every town I've been in, the bars have ran that event, um, those events, and, uh, so our decision-making point was that we, uh, believe that most of the economic impact from St. Patrick's Day would happen with or without the chamber involvement. So it freed up time for us to do new things in 2020, 21, including in the winter of 21, a new pub crawl, uh, that will be placed on a weekend that we decide with our stakeholders, is one that has historically slow sales. So if the chamber makes staff and financial resources into that event, we have a greater incremental economic, economic impact than we did with the same level of effort for St. Patrick's Day. So there was a really objective reason behind that. That's not to say St. Patrick's Day doesn't have tremendous merit, and this town doesn't love it, and I'm thrilled that people like Shooter and Mimi have, uh, stepped up to lead the effort to continue that event for our community. Uh, in about five weeks is the River Falls Bluegrass Festival, that has been, it'll be our 10th year. Um, I can tell you, it was struggling. Um, new competition, not enough marketing money, uh, and a model, uh, of how it was managed that made it very difficult to grow. Um, and so over the last couple of years, it barely broke even, and in the event business, I don't do events that break even. Um, that is unsustainable business model. So we decided, uh, to rebrand it, um, it will be now called the River Falls, uh, Bluegrass Bourbon and Brews Festival. Um, and so as you can tell, we expanded from one tasting that was beer and wine to three separate tastings. One will be beer, one will be wine and cider, and one will be bourbon. Um, it was, uh, the event was not growing for two primary reasons. The marketing dollars, as I suggested before, events of this size should have 15, 20, $30,000 put behind them. Um, we were putting about $3,000 of effort behind this event, and that's not very much money in today's dollars. So we, uh, the other problem that we had was the venues, uh, paid for their own music. And so there were some venues that were quite willing to do that, um, but many were not. And so, uh, in order to make this event grow, we needed to find a financial model that allowed the festival to pay for the music. So that's what we've done, uh, we've quadrupled the sponsor, uh, budget, um, and we're implementing a wristband system this year, where to see the music on Friday night would be $10. And we're implementing a wristband system this year where to see the music on Friday night would be $10. The music on Saturday, from noon till the end of night, will be $15. And a two-day pass will be available for $20. This compares to a similar type of music festival in Red Wing called Big Turn Music Festival. That was just last month, and their two-day pass is $65. Just to give you an idea of the price comparison. This change will allow us to pay for the music as the festival, which has made it much easier for us to recruit venues. It also allowed us to increase our music budget and the number of hours of music that we're going to have in the community by 60%. And it allowed us to quadruple the marketing budget to $13,000 this year with the hope of growing it in the future. No city support is requested for this event, although we do appreciate particularly the Police Department in keeping everybody safe during the year, or during the event. But I just wanted to give you an update about the exciting things that are happening with that event. Our goal is to put heads in beds with this event. The hotels reported to us that because the event was fading, they saw no significant bump in occupancy rates during that event weekend. And my goal is to come back to you in a couple of years and say, "The hotels are full. We can move on to figuring out the next event." The primary change for the summer is River Falls Days. Of course, our largest community-focused summer event. I hope that you can all see that. We identified a branding and a sustainability problem with River Falls Days. And there are some of the problems that I identified with River Falls Days are common to many events that are very mature events in our communities. When I first came to New Richmond, their event was Fun Fest. And because I was in the event, I had a side job as an independent contractor to help run events. I went to almost every event in western Wisconsin over the last 10 or 15 years. And when I arrived to Fun Fest, my family and I went to it, and it wasn't very fun. And so when they hired me as their Chamber Director, I said, "You've got a problem." It's because of various security issues. The Police Department was requiring their main music area to be surrounded in chain-linked fence. The carnival was on the other side of a highway. The food booths were down an alleyway that nobody could find. And there was very, very little to do. River Falls Days is not nearly that bad. But we did have a bit of a problem. I can tell you, it's always interesting when you're a Chamber Director about the grass is always greener on the other side of the fence in other towns. And it was always the impression that River Falls Days had lots of money from other Chamber Directors. We also... it also had the reputation of being one of the biggest beer parties in western Wisconsin. And one of the things that identified here is that the River Falls Days was, in the perception of many, still built too much around a late-night beer party and a band. With not enough friendly activities and not enough things to draw down people to the festgrounds during the daytime hours, most of the concentration was at night. What we learned in Ellsworth for Cheese Curd Fest is that people love authentic local experiences, higher-quality food, craft beverages, the arts, and live entertainment. And with that model, we grew that event from 2,500 people to 25,000 attendees in three years. So we're going to rebuild Cheese... not Cheese Curd, River Falls Days in a way that de-emphasizes the late-night party and instead emphasizes family-friendly activities throughout the day. As you can see on the... maybe you can see on the proposal, we were proposing three stages. One in Veterans Park. The Veterans Park stage to the bridge will be alcohol-free. And it's where we'll focus on the most family-friendly activities during the weekend. The second stage will be down on the southern end of Heritage Park. The other stage will be up on the City Plaza here. And so at any one time, there will be at least one band or some other type of entertainment playing on those stages, but usually two bands playing at any one time. So it'll have a bit of a traveling musical festival feel to it. We'll have that entertainment on Thursday night, Friday night, and all day Saturday. And to de-emphasize the late-night part of it, all music and alcohol sales will conclude at 11:00 PM. Nothing good happens at festivals after midnight. I can tell you from 25 years of experience, nothing good happens after midnight at festivals. So I'm quite... I am quite comfortable with the 11 o'clock closing time. Yes, we will sacrifice some late-night beer sales, but we'll more than make that up by having larger crowds during the day who are enjoying a higher-quality experience. We'll upgrade the beverage offerings. We'll work with the food booths to gradually improve food quality. A Taste of River Falls tent is proposed to be in the lower parking lot. In that tent, we will have a variety of sampling events of various locally-made products or local activities, perhaps arts and crafts, and other public art. We also are going to be collaborating with local artists to fill the entire fest area across the bridge up into Veterans Park with a variety of public art created by youth and adults alike. Our goal is to... the vision for this event, that as it were to grow, would be that we would highlight the river and encourage people to walk up and down the River Walk and occasionally have a music stage, perhaps culminating in the new pavilion in Glen Park, which is a beautiful facility. I think this will strengthen this event and make it not only something that local residents can be very proud of, but can also start to become a tourist event in the way that Cheese Curd Fest has done in Ellsworth. From a sustainability standpoint, my experience in Fun Fest when I got there is it had made $2,500. Chambers can do a raffle and make $2,500 and save themselves a lot of headache. Again, River Falls Days is not in that much dire straits, but it's trending that direction. And so we're going to make our sponsorship packages better match up with the actual value. Make sure that we don't unintentionally cannibalize revenue opportunities. And so one example is they shifted the fireworks from Sunday afternoon to Thursday night last year. The problem with that is Thursday night is when we have an opportunity, have a little bit of music down at the festgrounds, generate a few beer sales. And if people are leaving that area at 9 o'clock to get out to Hoffman Park for the fireworks, you as a festival has robbed yourself of a possible hour or two of revenue to sustain the event. And so the committee is going to put the fireworks back on Sunday because Sunday is... Sunday night is the festival's pretty much over, and it doesn't cannibalize any potential revenue sales. One of the great things about this festival is the parade. It's one of the last great parades in western Wisconsin, most have faded away. One of the disadvantages of the parade is it happens during prime time on Friday night when many festivals have some of their largest crowds down in the festgrounds. And so that Thursday night, boosting that Thursday night, becomes incredibly important. Saturday, boosting that, so there are large crowds in the fest area from noon on Saturday all the way to Saturday night, is also very important. And so we think that, again, this vision, this will help change the opinion of the... Have more families come out during the day, have a wide variety of genres of music, reduce the perhaps unfounded perception that it's a big late-night beer party, and have it start to develop a brand of high-quality, both music, arts, food, and craft beverages. Moving on to trick-or-treat, a simple event. Downtown businesses hand out candy to children. It's going to be a special year in 2020. It's on a Saturday this year. And so we are expecting much larger crowds. I can tell you, in New Richmond, they do always do it on Halloween, whether it's a weekday or not. And they get thousands of children. And the reason that happens is, and I know you're not the school board, but the school closes for that same... or Halloween trick-or-treating downtown. And so we see lots of little kids from noon to 3:00, and then the middle schoolers come out at 3:00 to 5:00. They see thousands. And so I'm looking forward to seeing a little bit bigger crowd that this event is on Saturday in 2020. Lastly, River Dazzle, the day after Thanksgiving, will be... continue to be part of our Choose Local campaign to encourage people to skip big-box visits on Black Friday and stay local instead. I've had the opportunity to see the River Dazzle first time here this past November and absolutely loved the event. It's a great event. And it was great to see people of all ages enjoying downtown for that day. It will be one of the anchors of a major Choose Local effort that we're doing at the Chamber that will utilize digital marketing and social media marketing. And the most... the first rollout of that was our Leap Local event that encouraged people to choose local when shopping on the extra day of the year we were all given on February 29th, which was on a Saturday. We're going to have a River Falls Restaurant Week, a virtual health and wellness fair, and all kinds of special events. It'll be driven mostly through social media to encourage people to do Choose Local. Events like Ladies Night Out and River Dazzle will be anchors of that kind of promotion. Just to close, generally speaking, the... one of the problems besetting most of these events were very old-school marketing techniques with no measurement. We'll be going almost completely to digital and marketing and social media efforts. So you know that when you look at something on Amazon and then you go away from that webpage and then you go to your Facebook feed, and suddenly there's ads for the same product you were just looking at, Amazon? Those are the types of techniques that we will be able to access. So if you go to the River Falls Bluegrass Festival page, we will follow you and you're going to start getting ads about that event. I know which one of you listen to Bluegrass. And so if you're listening to Bluegrass on Pandora or Spotify, you will start getting ads for Bluegrass delivered to you. If we gather your email, we can tell Facebook that email address, and it will find your personal Facebook post and start delivering ads to you. So some of that might be creepy. But if it's used properly, where as a consumer, I love craft beer, I want craft beer advertisers to talk to me. If they're using it properly, it's a very, very effective way to get people to come to your events. And all of our events will be using those really sophisticated marketing techniques. So go to the River Falls Bluegrass Fest, look at our music. And by doing that, you will start getting ads delivered to your various feeds, social media, just to see how it looks. With that, I'd open up to any questions that any of you might have.
Any questions for Russ?
The only one I missed about the parade. You said it wasn't good on Friday night, but are we...
No, it's a time-honored tradition of this event. And it... if you were to rebuild most festivals, you would do it differently. But, you know, you can't argue with the thousands of people that line up, people that have penciled in that date years ago. So no, there's no suggestion to move the parade.
Okay, anybody else? No? Thanks, Russ.
Thank you.
Okay, I will entertain a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval for the resolution approving request from the River Falls Area Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau for the assistance with 2020 events.
Second.
Any other questions or comments? No? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next is a resolution approving the special event application with ordinance variance request for St. Patty's Day. This would obviously okay the request for open beer and plus the street closure. And River Falls, the police are okay with the street closure, but the police do not support the open container exemption. So I will look for a motion here.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of resolution appointing or approving the special event application with ordinance variance request for the St. Patty's Day events.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Here, our Police Department does not support this. I'd like to hear from them today before we vote on this about the specifics of why they do not support this particular event.
This is going to be consistent with the River Falls Days recommendation that the Police Department gave, is that this is a family event. And I do appreciate the efforts of Mimi and Shooter. And the event, I have no objections over, but it's the open alcohol. There's no restaurants or bars that are on the barricaded street location, for one. All the restaurants and bars are away from it. This is a considerable increase also in the space that they're requesting. The Chamber of Commerce requested basically Main Street as the open container so the participants can go from business to business. And this is now going to the River Walk Alley to Second Street, in addition to Cascade to Maple. And the Chamber of Commerce holds a lot of credibility with me. They've had timeless tested events, and they've succeeded in all of them. And they're not a participant in this, and that means a lot to me. So for those reasons, I would recommend the denial of the recommendation.
Well, that makes a lot of sense to me, thank you.
Anybody else?
You know, I struggle with the request. Dan is one of the best operators we have in town, I will say that publicly. He does a nice job. He's very diligent. It's not Shooter that I'm worried about. It's a few other bars who may not be as diligent, who may not be watching as closely. And again, I go back to Chief Young's comment about the fact that my comfort level with the Chamber monitoring this, going from location to location, making sure that there's somebody at the door, making sure that wristbanding is happening, making sure that IDs are getting checked. And I understand that there's a volunteer group that's going to do that. I just think... I just don't have the same level of comfort that I did with the Chamber being in charge of this, being in front of this. So I guess I'm probably going to not be in favor of this.
Yep?
Historically, the Chamber has run events downtown, and they've done a pretty decent job of running these events. St. Patty's Day was a hot topic where folks would get behind some bet races, which has now been removed, and be intoxicated. And we'd have numerous people in our ERs up here. That's not the people that are looking to run this today. And I don't foresee the Chamber going to do that going forward. It sounds like the Chamber's got some great things coming forward, and I appreciate that. How can we build confidence or a history if we don't give them a chance? There is no way we can do that if we don't do that. We can't control everything. We can try to minimize that. We can put an impact down on individual bars when they come up for renewal or their liquor licenses if they violate the law that is in hand today. They still have to, which one of them brought up, that the laws still apply. You can't just walk into a bar and get a beer underage. They're going to be giving out wristbands, they're going to be giving out mugs. I've seen at previous events that were sponsored by another entity here in town where their volunteers would stand outside in their shirt and they'd have a beer in the hand. How responsible is that? I don't foresee them allowing any of their volunteers to be under the influence or consume alcohol while they are volunteering for this event. I think we give them an opportunity to prove themselves. We've heard that Richmond does this, that the bars successfully do this year after year. I think it's a great opportunity to give them that one chance. It is a family-friendly event, just like any of the others. I know a lot of folks that sit around in the backyard having a barbecue and a couple beers. Are we going to say that's not a family event because they're enjoying a couple beers? Same goes for this, nothing changed. The Chamber... or not the Chamber, but this event here brings people to our city. It continues the tradition that River Falls has held. And I don't think that a couple beers on Main Street is going to negatively impact us. But people that might want to be on the irresponsible side of that will go into the bar, they'll get hammered, and then down a couple, go to the next bar and do it again. If you can walk down the street with a beer in your hand, you can gradually enjoy that. And there's probably a little less risk for some of the younger folks or irresponsible folks to do that. I'm in favor of this. I was last time.
Well, I couldn't agree with Mr. Gag anymore, Mr. Mayor. These individuals coming before us asking to extend an event that the Chamber has stopped promoting when the Director of the Chamber just got up and informed us that he has full confidence in these individuals to carry on this event in the honor and tradition that it has been going on already for eight years. This will be its ninth year in our community. And it is, it's a great event, and it's a great family fun event. And it has had an open container exemption in the past for the Chamber. And last year, when we denied them their River Falls Days exemption, I strongly stated that I feel it is wrong for us to pick and choose that the Chamber should be allowed... that I feel it is wrong for us to pick and choose that the Chamber should be allowed to do things like this, but other individuals picking up that baton, especially when the Chamber has set it down for them, is inexcusable on our part. If you wanna talk about the borders of that exemption, great, you know, if you want it to be the same as what the Chamber was in the past, that's understandable. But I, I think that they will do a very nice job with this event and I think that we should give them a chance and see that it will be an event that will carry on to, into our future.
Mr. Mayor, mayor? I'm torn, I, I, I understand, um, the impulse to keep on with a tradition that has been associated with St. Patrick's Day. I have nothing against, um, the, I have nothing against you for asking this, I just, I just don't want, well, I'm, I really don't like open container out on the street events at all. I mean, I, I really don't, and I don't see how that contributes to, um, to the, the type of downtown River Falls that I want, even, you know, especially when there are a lot of people here. So, so I'm torn, I, um, it's, it's one thing when it's the Chamber, when it's to benefit a variety of businesses, but, um, one thing I don't want to do is set a precedent where we allow, um, you know, one, one person to ask for one event and another for another, I don't know, I'd, frankly, I'd rather the city not have any open container events. I, I think that we've got plenty of bars, uh, we've got plenty of opportunity to drink, plenty of opportunity to, you know, enjoy downtown River Falls, I just don't think it has to be walking around with, um, an open container of alcohol on the street. So, I'll be voting against it.
Okay, anybody else have anything to say?
I do wanna remind us that we just voted in favor of one organization to do that exact same.
I understand that.
Without discussion.
Without discussion, without those comments. I've historically been against it too, but we are allowing one without the other. I believe with certain boundaries and volunteers and monitoring, we have a police department that gets involved. I think we can give them one opportunity, come back next year, and if they were successful, do it again. If they're not, pull that chain and say, you're not gonna do it. We have that opportunity, we have that power, quote unquote. I think it's a great opportunity to bring more people downtown.
Okay, anybody else got anything else?
May I speak? I had to clarify something, Chief Johnson.
What, what is that?
Can I ask your thoughts on the subject?
What's that?
Can I ask your thoughts on the subject, please?
Yes.
Come on up.
On my application, it asked where we wanted the open container to go to. And Chief Young just said, it goes from Second Street to the alley, and that is correct. However, two of our soup locations now are in the alley. The Mercantile and the Arcade specifically sought me out and asked if they could be on the soup crawl, so that they can get bodies through their doors and get exposure to their businesses. The reason I put Second Street is, we are trying to not shut down Main Street, because Family Fresh had always been against that in the past, so it's, it's very difficult to get into their business. We are not shutting down Main Street. I asked that it be shut down from Main Street at the stoplights to Second Street. So that's why the variance would have to go to Second Street. So that would be in front of the Masonic Temple, Gents, Treasures of the Heart, it'd be that, the 100 block of Walnut Street. That's why we said Second Street. We're not trying to expand it, but in the technical terms, it needs to go to Second Street, it needs to go to the alley. We've got 20 soup locations, and on top of that, we had three businesses that are not involved in the soup crawl donated gift cards for additional prizes that wanted to be included in this, but couldn't do the soup.
I have a question, if I may?
Yes.
Will you allow your staff and volunteers to consume and be under the influence during this event?
No, no, I, I have a no drinking policy at my bar and, and the staff always, while we're, while we're working and...
Thank you.
Or before, so...
Your policy as far as volunteers, and I know it's kind of early and you gotta formulate a lot of this, um, when your volunteers see something, a violation, are they reporting that to you, or is there gonna be like a committee or a task force that's reporting that to police, or how's that go?
Yeah, if we're not, if we are unable to resolve that, we'll call the police. Everyone's got a cell phone on them, so if, if they don't voluntarily, if they have the wrong cup, they don't have a wristband, if they have a bottle or a can or whatever, if there's a violation, we'll, we'll attempt to correct the situation on our, by ourselves without involving the police, but if need be, then, then we would call the police.
So essentially just asking the folks to take the alcohol back inside, or that kinda thing?
Yeah. Generally, most people are, are good, and sometimes they're carried away, or they didn't know, or whatever. So it's our job to both enforce the rules and kindly ask them to return to the, to the, all the, all the bars, all the licensed entities, all the bars that you guys have approved their licenses, will be issuing alcohol. I mean, that's, we, we do this on a daily basis. And where the Chamber of Commerce does it twice a year, once a year. So, we're professionals, this is how we make our living. And...
Okay.
I, I, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Bierstein.
How, how will people from out of town know what the rules are, though?
At each location, we'll have a list of rules, just as the Chamber of Commerce did in the previous eight years that you have granted. The, I always post mine on the door, and it goes up by where the, it says it's a soup location, when you're out, you flip it over, it says, sorry, we're out of soup, and then there's the rules. And on the rules, it'll have time, you know, open container is from noon to five.
I've gotta clarify your, your description, 'cause I've, I've got the map up here in front of me. You mentioned that the Mercantile and, and...
Vagabond Arcade.
Yeah. Well, they're down over here, but the, but the map only shows from north Riverwalk Alley through Walnut to Second Street and then Main Street.
It should've said Cascade to wherever Mavericks is, is that Pine or Maple?
Maple. That, that part, but the, but the, but what I'm, I guess what I'm saying is, is that the map doesn't, doesn't include, doesn't include this part of Riverwalk. It only goes down to what would appear to be Lazy River at this point.
Like, is the whole alley labeled, um, Riverwalk Alley?
Well, I guess it is, by...
So, so that's what I was, that's what I was, my assumption was, that the whole entire alley had been labeled Riverwalk Alley, so that would go from the bridge to Lazy River. Is that correct?
Well, I guess, I, I, I think that clarification is important to the, to the council, because that's not, that's not the way I perceived it. I perceived it just to be to Riverwalk Alley. That's where it stopped, not that it went down the alley by looking at the map.
But how would people access to get to?
That, that's kinda my point, is it's, it didn't look like you included those other locations based on the map that was drawn.
I made the assumption that the entire alley was the Riverwalk Alley.
That's why I'm, that's why I'm clarifying, clarifying for you.
I was assuming that it went from the bridge, right outside here, all the way to Lazy River.
Okay.
Since that's, it's, it's a named alley now, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
That's clear to me now.
There is no stop point in between there, is there?
I, I, I'm just trying to clarify for you, Dan, I mean, I...
I'm just trying to answer it.
Yeah, I, and I, I understand that, I mean, I'm not trying to debate with you, I'm just trying to get everybody to understand what you're asking for.
So basically, we'd have three access points. They could come in from, uh, Smoky Treats, which is one of the soup locations, and come down and around, and go into the Mercantile that way. They can come down through Veterans Park, or they can come from, uh, the Lazy River entrance, or across the bridge. I mean, not with an open container, but that's how you'd access the alley.
Okay.
Or come out of Mel's, or, you know, one of the businesses that has, uh, you know, Rose has a, has a rear entrance.
Mayor?
Anybody else? Yep.
So, I guess I don't just help, I don't know if I will help. Saying Mr. Morris, Councilmember Morris said that you're unclear about the drawing of where the open container is, because of the way it's labeled. So Second Street is labeled, just like Riverwalk Alley. Neither of those two are outlined as a street. It's, it's, on the map, it's demarked as, just, that's the end, so I guess, we, I understand from your description, you're asking for an open container exemption on Riverwalk Alley from Maple to Walnut.
No, to Cascade.
Cascade.
All the way to, well...
To, to Juniors. From, from Juniors to Mavericks.
Start with Riverwalk Alley.
Okay.
So, are you asking for an open container from Maple to Walnut? So from Smoky Treats to Lazy River?
Yeah.
Okay?
That's the entire span of the alley, correct?
Correct, not to Cascade, that's what I...
Right, but Family Fresh isn't, well, I'm just saying Family Fresh...
And then you're asking for open container from, um, on Walnut, from Second Street to the river, basically, to the dead end on Walnut to Lazy River?
Right.
Then you're asking for open container on Main Street from Cascade to Maple?
Yes.
Okay, so there's two streets drawn?
Yes.
But there's three streets that are in the application?
Yeah, okay.
And then Veterans Park has not been determined, which I think the council ought to, if you're gonna grant the open container, you should be clear about what you're granting, because those three streets don't include Veterans Park. And so if we're gonna have people walking through Veterans Park, we'll have to figure that out too. I mean, it, just, from a logistics standpoint, I understand, the police chief is suggesting to you that this is a new territory. We understand why they're requesting it, but you, you wanna be specific about open container exemptions, because anywhere you don't exempt is not exempt. It's, it's an enforcement area, and we don't need officers or reserve officers arguing with people about where they can and can't have the beer. And then also on our, if you approve it, the marketing material at each of those establishments needs to be clear about, this is where you can have it and this is where you can, because it's not, we're not just saying all the square feet in downtown, the open container is essentially the streets and sidewalks.
So if I, can, may I address this? And so when we submitted the request to, um, the police department, you know, it was very clear that this was to mimic exactly like the Chamber has run in the past. And so, our intent is that open container can flow from location to location. So to that point, two of the locations are on Elm Street. None of them are on Second, so we wouldn't expect open container to be allowed all the way down Second Street, but Main Street, and then inclusive of the areas on each of these side streets and the, um, alleyway here, where all soup locations are held. Again, the addition of the Arcade is one of them, but Mercantile's always been part of the soup crawl, both River Dazzle and, um, the, yep, the Chili Crawl and the Potato Soup Crawl, so that area of allowing the exemption is not new. And our furthest point, Juniors has also previously been, um, a participant in the soup crawls, so that extension of the area is not new. So we are not asking for any boundaries to be extended outside of what has previously been requested the last eight years.
I'm, I'm not sure that's correct, because I think the open container was Elm Street and Main Street primarily, um, and...
From Pine to Cascade is all the Chamber...
So I, so I think there is, there is a difference in this request from what was...
Well, I think Chief was just saying from Pine to Cascade, like we have requested it as the Chamber has in the past.
Well, this is, um, from, from the documents you submitted, it was basically, and I guess I'll clear up the mud maybe, from Maple Street to Cascade, and then from Riverwalk Alley to Second Street.
Correct.
Because you could be behind Nutty Squirrel and walk out their back door to get down to Walnut Street to go to the obstacle course. That's not Main Street, but it's still within that block of Second Street to Riverwalk Alley.
Right.
Hence my point, going through Veterans Park to get to the alley, to go to the Arcade.
I'm not suggesting you can't request it, I, I think there's some variation to what has been, and we've had all kinds of conversations with the staff with the Chamber about this over the years also, and recall, there was, a few years ago, we were not in favor, staff was not in favor of the Chamber's request for the, the duration, the time, the, and so, this hasn't always just gone through and been approved, because it was the Chamber. I, I'm not suggesting it wasn't, I'm just, if we're gonna prove something and staff has to implement it, we wanna make sure that we know what you're wanting and what, and that the council, whatever they approve, is what they think they're approving, so that...
And likewise, we wanna know what the expectations are. So again, we are not looking to change what has happened in the past, um, that this is this event, although personally, I'm throwing money in to make this happen, my shop, this is one of the two days I run in the black. Two days of the year that I run in the black because of this event, and without this event, I don't. And a lot of other businesses are exactly the same. So we are, this is more than just the bars, when you look at the 20 participating locations and the fact that now we've brought on three new soups this year, including the Big Cheese, which isn't even in a sta, like their food truck, and now they're gonna, they're gonna do soup in the crawl. Like this is a, the, the town is very, very excited about this event, and, um, Dan and I are very happy to be able to facilitate putting this on with the support of the other businesses, and so we're hoping to have the city and the police department behind us as well. Cause again, we don't wanna change anything, we wanna run it responsibly, we wanna know what the expectations are, and we will meet them.
Well, and if I could too, on the open container, I mean, it's, it's my perspective that there aren't gonna be vendors on the corners selling alcoholic beverages, correct? I mean, people are buying their beverages in the establishments. The open container, from my perspective, is purely a mode of transportation for people to move freely from one business to the other without being constrained by the fact that they have like two beers in front of them, or somebody just bought a beer and now the whole group is staying at one place for 15, 20 more minutes, just idling, waiting until the other person can leave, cause they happen to have a full beverage. So it is mainly about transportation, it's not about guzzling beer in the streets, it's not about becoming overly intoxicated, it's just about moving freely around town. You just happen to have a beverage in your hand.
Right, and I would argue to say that we actually, by allowing that, encourage less consumption, because, you know, as was brought up earlier, people aren't having to finish their drink before they leave to go on to the next venue. That this is something that they can casually enjoy throughout the entire event, um, and then it brings business to more locations instead of people just staying in one or two places.
And if I could, Chief, to go back to the, the area involved, is it your impression that this is substantially different than years past, or fairly similar?
It's, it's, it's wider, yes. The, the past and, um, Assistant City Administrator Jason Stroud did bring up last year's, and as was stated, it was from Pine to Cascade on Main Street, that was what they were looking for the exemption.
Okay.
Chief, as long as you've got that up, I'm, I'm curious, and I don't mean to belabor the point, but I think last year we did, when the Chamber had it, we did include Veterans Park, but I don't think we included that stretch of Riverwalk between Veterans Park and Walnut.
No, strictly in the request, it's Main Street from Pine to Cascade.
And if, if changing those parameters would grant us approval, give confidence to the, to the council, then I think those two very small changes, you know, having it stay on Main Street in front of those locations, so Elm and Walnut, um, and that not allowing them out the backside through the alley, I, I think that those are very easily accommodated, and, and something that we, you know, are willing to do.
Yeah, if that were to be considered, the only thing I might suggest is that the Riverwalk Alley is potentially important to people that are engaging in your event and in broadening the event to include those businesses.
Right, there's, there's locations that don't sell alcohol that, that include, and they reached out to me to be included. For example, Vagabond Arcade said that it's an excellent opportunity for them to get people through their doors, see their business, cause they are down in the alley and it's a low traffic area. The Mercantile has won the Chili Crawl in, in the, I mean, they've won it. And, uh, let's see, Puff Puff Glass is a new member, they asked if they could be in it, just because they just moved locations, and they're right on Main Street, just to get more people through their door. Family Fresh is doing it.
Anybody else got anything?
So I, I wasn't intending to get involved in your policy argument, that's certainly something you can, you can determine as a council, but does the council feel they understand what they would be approving based on the motion? I think...
I do. Based on the discussion I just heard.
Okay.
I think so.
So...
It was my...
Then you can do your thing, wait, I think we, the chief and I understand what's on the table. I just wanted to make sure that you, I think what you had on the table until we clarified was not what... They were requesting, now I think we know what they're requesting and it's on the table and you can determine how you... determine how you wanna do it from a policy perspective.
It was my intention to do it exactly like it has been done the previous eight years. But we did have some new some new people get into the soup crawl, so that's why the the addition of the alley, and we're also doing, instead of bed races, we're doing a four-person relay obstacle course, and that'll go on Walnut Street.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I've got one more quick question. I don't know if it's for the clerk or for the chief, but since the locations that that were being mentioned, the Mercantile and and the and the Vagabond Arcade do not currently hold a liquor license, can people bring the liquor in and consume it there?
Bring it in. They cannot sell it.
Yeah.
They can't sell it. Okay, all right. Thank you.
I have one last thing to say, and I I concur with Ms. O'Dean. I'm struggling with this. However, I'm willing to let it happen one time.
Okay.
Dan?
I agree.
Yeah, I I appreciate that, and again, I'm I'm struggling with it, too, but we can we can come on different sides of that.
Anybody else got anything? Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll take a motion for this, and just so we all understand, this is this is yes or no is strictly for the open container. Everything else will go on. If we, I mean, if we say no, everything else still happens. This is just open container.
So you have a motion in second already?
You already got that on the table.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, so, okay. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
No. Do you wanna, did you get that?
You wanna roll call?
Roll call? Okay, do a roll call vote.
Paige?
Yes.
O'Dean?
No.
Watson?
Yes.
Dany?
Yes.
Morset?
No.
Donnie?
No.
Beerset?
Yes.
Yeah, motion passes four to three.
Next, we'll go on to Administrator's Report. If anybody has anything for Scott, or Scott, do you have anything for us?
While you've got, thinking about your questions for me. March 16th, registration opens for the city's recreation programs. As Cindy mentioned, that's at riverfalls activity reg, so a activity R E G dot com. You can also get more information if you go to the city's website, rfcity.org, and go to Recreation. March 23rd and April 3rd, two, April 3rd is in-person absentee voting. In-person absentee voting will be for the presidential primary and spring election. Those hours are Monday and Wednesday, 8 to 6 p.m., Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, 8 to 5, so 6 o'clock, extra hour on Monday and Wednesday. April 7th, from 7 a.m. to 8 p.m. is the presidential primary and spring election. And all the polling locations will be open from 7 to 8 on that day. April 17th to 19th is the annual River Falls Bluegrass Bourbon and Brews, as was mentioned. That's at riverfallsbluegrass.com. And then we will have an electronics recycling event, April 18th, from 9 to 1. That's at the Public Works Garage. Free for River Falls Municipal Utility customers, both businesses and residential customers. Example items accepted would be computers, monitors, printers, TVs, cell phones, et cetera, and that's that's an event put on by River Falls Municipal Utility for its customers.
Scott, could I ask a question about battery recycling? Did I understand that correctly, that people can just drop off batteries at City Hall for recycling? I saw that in a post about the specific event.
We have some informal collections, and then we usually collect them and take them to these events. I think we'd prefer if people would take them to the the event, April 18th, but we do accept we get walk-in customers that bring us CFLs and batteries and other things, and I don't think we've turned anybody away.
Just smaller volumes.
Yeah, we don't, we don't want
You don't want all the car batteries in town.
We don't want people to replace their their fluorescent bulbs at their their office and bring us a case of old ones and things, but typically, we get small amounts of residential created waste that people don't don't wanna put in the garbage, which is fine.
Okay, anybody got anything else for Scott? Okay, I'd just like to make a couple appointments. I'd like to reappoint Mark Spafford to the Utility Advisory Board through May of 2023, and I'd like to, I got a new appointment of Robert Lea through April of 2023 on the Utility Advisory Board, too.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We accept your appointments.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.